Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Joplin Schools Board of Education to order. Roll call please, Ms. Walden.
Mrs. Sharp?
Present.
Mr. Steele?
Present.
Mr. Landis?
Present.
Mr. Stickland?
Here.
Mr. Kimbrough is absent. Mr. Wilkerson? Mr. Flowers?
Here. This time we'd like to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Mike Landis gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I guess so.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Mike.
No district showcase?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Steele, Ms. Sharp?
You're looking the wrong direction again, aren't you?
Please vote.
Yes.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Approval of agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I did have a question, do we need to remove the one item for Project Lead the Way? Is that what you're doing next meeting?
No, we're just gonna approve it tonight, but we're gonna explain more.
So I had a yes and a yes.
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 Yes. Superintendent report?
Okay, well, I look forward to next month when we have district showcase again, I'm missing the kids. Superintendent's report, first item on the agenda is Project Lead the Way, and we're gonna visit with you a little bit about an exciting opportunity that's come our way here recently that we want to share with you that is very much in alignment with the vision of Joplin High School and FTC, so I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Bessendorf to visit with you about that.
You know, Project Lead the Way is a great program that we have looked at historically, I mean, I remember as much as my first year in the district, so several years ago looking at how can we make this happen, and the price tag was something that wasn't a possibility at that time, and the great news is, is that things have evolved in their program as well as in our program, and then additionally, we have a grant from Bemis for $35,000 over three years to help make this happen, and it came late in the ballgame to us, and so tonight on the consent agenda, you'll have an item that asks you to approve a course, and we're going to begin the program of the implementation of Project Lead the Way. It's a program that you may have heard about, Carthage School District actually has it and has had some really great success with it, and so we've been able to capitalize on things that we know from that, but we're just starting, we're gonna begin with the Principles of Engineering class, and just so you know, Mike Gurley is gonna be teaching that, and I had hoped that he would be here tonight, and that Dave Rockers could be here tonight, and Carrie Seketa to explain those things, and Mike is actually in Wichita in the two weeks of training, so this was late that we found out about it, and we said, can you make this happen, and he did, and so kudos to him for being there and making this happen, and then Dave is also at a conference for his degree, you know, in his area, and so they're gonna come next month and tell you more about it, but I just wanted you to know a little bit about what was coming, why we're bringing a late course addition to the Joplin High School program of study, and what's going on, but it's something that is a very positive step in the right direction.
Which school districts are using this?
I know that Carthage is, I'm not sure what other school districts have it, I know that there are many school districts that have it, there are some great benefits to the kids on it in relationship to college credit after the fact through RALA through this, it's a very high-quality program that has been around for a while, that we're excited next year will actually be all online, and so that's gonna make things a lot better for us with our one-to-one situation.
Thanks, sounds exciting.
I think we'll find that kids find it exciting.
Thank you very much, and next item on the agenda, summer school report, and I think Mr. Cravens was here to update us on how summer school went this year.
And I tried to get some principals to be here to talk about summer school, but they're all on vacation, so we do have, fortunate to have a summer school teacher auditing the board meeting, so she's in the back row. Janelle did an excellent job. Word from the street was summer school was smooth, and it, so it was a good year all around, we had 245 students in kindergarten, 580 in the elementary overall, we had 1,506 students, that's including special education, 220 in middle school, or middle school numbers were a little lower this year, and then high school was at 450 students. Some highlights, we had 50 classes passed in the flex, which is 25 credits, we had 153 classes passed, nine through 12, and all those equal half credits every time we pass a class, and then at the three through fifth grade, read 180, we had 75 kids who had 100% participation in that program over the summer, which is celebration for summer school to get their 100%. And then finally, there was a fencing demonstration at the middle school, and I'm told that the kids think they can take the demonstrator, and they want a rematch, is what I was told earlier, so I'm not sure how that will work, but...
Fencing means a whole lot, completely different thing to me than it does Jason, I grew up on a farm, that has a whole different...
So you're thinking you can take him as fencing?
Absolutely, and we argued about it for a long time until I realized he was talking about some kind of pointy thing you stick people with.
And he was talking about barbed wire, and I'm like, yeah, you can get hurt both ways.
You can, and I have been.
And then, of course, celebration of nine graduates this summer, nine students were able to finish their credits and graduate, so it was a good summer school, we appreciate the teachers and principals' hard work, and celebrate it, it was a good season for it, very good.
Any questions for Jason?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, construction updates. A lot of exciting things happening in the construction world right now in the Joplin schools, so Archie, appreciate you coming this evening to share with us.
Sure. Well, I, for one, although I like watching the district showcase, it's a lot better when I don't have to follow them, because it's always a tough one to follow, but...
We'd agree.
But, starting with Irving Elementary, we've had a lot of progress on all the job sites over the past month, but in particular at Irving, Midwest Drywall has been very busy over there, they've completed all the drywall work on the second through fifth grade classrooms, and they've got about half of the drywall work completed in the common space, and are getting ready to start drywall work in the K-1 wing. Bills and Allens and Gold, all the MEP trades, they all continue to work on their overhead and wall rough-in work, they're staying out in front of the drywall guys is really all that we ask, and they're doing outstanding job of that.
What's the duration on the drywall, just curious, when will they finish that?
Until they finish it, I would expect that we'll have all the drywall hung by the end of next month, and they should be close to taping out the balance of the space, so maybe two weeks into, let's see, two weeks into September, we should have all the drywall taped out.
Very good.
Commercial glass has completed about 95% of the windows in the two-story classroom, so if you've been over there, I think there's only three left that they're still working on, so that's helping us out tremendously. Saratoga today was actually finishing up, with the exception of the FEMA 406 room, has all the spaces in the dry now, so that's helping us tremendously as far as putting the finishes in and making sure that they're taken care of. Walker Masonry is substantially complete with their exterior masonry work on the site, just cleaning up a few last little details on that and getting them out of the way so that we can go ahead and work on curbs and asphalt paving and those things, now that their big heavy lulls and other equipment aren't gonna be running around the outside of the building any longer. New trade on site this month, Yakal Painting has got in and started work in the second through fifth, did I pronounce that wrong?
Yeah.
No, I don't know.
I met with a gentleman the other day, and he was sporting an Eagle Pride tee shirt that, from back when we went to Arrowhead Stadium, and one of the local tee shirt suppliers here, you know, print shops, had a bunch of those that were, I guess, leftover, and they were in a rag bin, and he got a bunch of rags on the bottom of them, or a whole bunch of Eagle Pride shirts, and his whole team's sporting those, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Cool. Well, the painters have started work on both floors of the two-story classroom wing, they've got, I guess, what I would call the field colors, they haven't started with the accent colors yet, but some of the neutral colors have been applied. Also, if you go up to the second level, they've put the blue dry fall paint on the ceiling, which is actually going to emulate the under-the-sea theme that they've got going on in there, so you can kind of start to visualize what that's gonna look like. And then last but not least, Joplin Floor Design has moved on to site also, and they've started ceramic tile works, and now we've got a couple of bathrooms that have ceramic tile work on that, and they'll be working their way out into the hallway so that we can start to see more what the finishes are gonna look like. Over the next month, in addition to the drywall work that we talked about, we should see the painting complete in the two-story classroom, as well as the ceiling grid get installed so the MEP guys can start dropping light fixtures and ceiling diffusers into the space. We expect all of the casework potentially to start showing up for the second through fifth grade classrooms, which would be exciting, and we should also see curbs being installed around the, I guess I'll call it the back of the building, I get directionally confused, I guess that'd be the east side of the campus, and we're gonna work our way around from the east. Any questions on Irving?
Still on schedule?
Huh? Yeah, no, we're still hoping to finish a little early there, and everything seems to be tracking well. East Middle School and Soaring Heights Elementary, Midwest Drywall's got a number of guys working on that site as well, they've finished about 90% of our drywall work in the East Middle School area, and they've taped about 50% of that out, they've just got some loose ends, they're dropping back and finishing up so that we can get the painter started over there as well. They're also working hard over in Soaring Heights, if you've been over there, we've got about half of the drywall framing up, and the MEP guys are following right behind them and getting electrical and plumbing into the walls. Sellers in Marquez, who's the window installer, has started installing windows along the west side of the building, and they'll continue to chase the masons around the back of the building and start getting that closed in. Walker Masonry has completed about 95% of the masonry on East Middle School, and they've started work on Soaring Heights Elementary now, they're working on the front, and actually should be adding another crew so that they can work both sides of the elementary at the same time to wrap it up a little quicker. Over the course of the next month, we should see the painters show up, and also ceiling grid guys in East Middle School, which will really make that place start to take shape. We'll also see, you know, a feature that'll, I think's gonna be neat to look at, they're gonna start building all of the clouds for the auditorium on the ground, and then start swinging those up into place, so by next month, we should see those, if not in place, at least built on-site and getting ready to hang. It did remind me one thing that at Irving that we should see here over the next two weeks that I think will be a fun thing to watch, is the glass guys are supposed to have our film out for the eagle that's gonna go on the glass clear story area, so you'll start to see some of that branding taking shape, which will be nice over the main entry.
When's that?
Should be within the next two weeks. Questions on East Middle School?
Like the walking track?
Yeah, yeah, you can see, got some of that in. Last but certainly not least, Franklin High School, not Franklin High School, Joplin High School, Franklin Tech Center, lot busy, more superstructure going on, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of red iron that's on the site since last month. HME has completed the framing for the east half of Area C, which is the Arts and Communications Wing, they also completed all of the framing this past month for Area B, and they completed the steel framing for the west half of Area E, which is part of the Bioscience area. Over the course of the next month, they'll start to fall back on actually setting the red iron and working more on the detail work, which will allow us to get more elevated slabs poured and get more structural studs going up around the perimeter, so they're gonna be very busy over the next month making that happen for us. Branco's been very busy as well, they did complete all the elevated slabs in Area D, which is our very center core, so that we could start our metal stud framing, which if you've been by, you see that PCI is a new sub that's out there for us now, and they've started with both the exterior stud framing, and they've also started with some of the interior stud framing down on the first floor, so we'll start to really see the building getting closed here over the next month. Branco is also continuing to work in Area A where we can, they're working on walls and working on footings that we don't need micro piles for, so that we can get that area as far ahead as possible until we can get the micro piles, all the design worked out, and get those guys mobilized and out to the site. We've also jumped them ahead, and they've started on the auxiliary gym a couple months earlier than what we planned, just to try to take advantage of their crews while they're available to get some more space done. Emery Sap just continues to work on the package for site utility work that they were working on last month. Other trades, another trade that's new to the site, Golden Mechanical, who's also working over at East Middle School, has started putting ductwork up in Area D on the lower level, and they've got a lot of their hangers up, so as you drive by, you'll start to see, you know, more of the interior building components hanging from the structure, which is always exciting. Last kind of couple things of significance, as you know, we've been trying to get some stuff worked out with micro piles guys, and Branco did hire Hayward Baker to do our micro piles earlier this month, and they're gonna be working on those in Areas A, G, H, and K, they're working closely with the design team and with us and the rest of the contractors to hopefully be on-site by August the 19th, and so we'll keep working with them to get them out to the job site so that our footings can continue in those areas. And then, I guess, last but not least, as you know, we've been working on VE with the architects and with the district staff, to date, I think we've came up with about 1.8 million in VE options that...
What's VE?
Value engineering, as far as looking at ways that maybe we can, you know, save some money and return it to the project budget to, you know, to help pay for construction. So I think we've got about 1.8 that we've directed the contractors on, and we're continuing to research other options, and we'll bring those forward for the team, and any of them that we think have strong merit, then we'll make recommendations on those as well. Questions on the high school or Franklin Tech?
At East, is it the gymnasium that's the safe room, and then an auditorium in Soaring Heights, is there two there?
There's, yes, there's two, there's two safe rooms.
I was walking through yesterday, Mr. Landis and I, and I got confused.
Yeah, the gym is one of the safe rooms, and then we've got some, I can't remember the exact purposes of the room, it's not, it's off of the gym, we've got the community or the building, I get them flip-flopped, but we've got about three other classrooms, or not classrooms, but building spaces that have a hardened lid on it that serve as another safe room.
And then, Dr. Mr. Wolf, will you be taking the tour for the East folks and the Soaring Heights folks?
We will, as soon as the architects and for the Irving folks, as far as the...
Well, the Irving folks went through.
Just the design, just the team that was making decisions, and so we want the whole school to get to do that, and I think that that one may actually be scheduled for the Irving staff.
It is. Yeah, I think that's the 12th of August.
But we wanna get the design teams through for East and Soaring Heights, but we wanna wait until they can feel enough of all the spaces that they can get a feel for what it is.
I can't visually see it now.
Huh?
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that they can, totally on the elementary side, they need to be able to feel that differently, so it makes it worthwhile.
That rolls up.
Yep.
I would think you're probably about a month out, probably on East, from being able to do that, because they should have the rest of the walls framed in, and so we can kind of walk them through the space and explain to them.
And it's so exciting. Just something to look forward to.
It's so much fun to see them take their ideas that they were telling the architects, and to see that real in their school to be, it's so much fun to see their faces and to see that their ideas really are what shaped this school.
Yeah. It's funny.
Any other, anything else, Archie, any other questions for anybody?
I don't have any questions.
Sherwood liked that eagle shirt to be worn.
Huh?
Sherwood liked that eagle shirt to be worn.
Okay, I will...
Maybe at the construction report at the board meeting, I don't know.
Okay, I will, I will wear it next month, I'm sorry.
Mike, do you have anything for us on safe rooms? Thanks, Archie.
Thanks, Archie.
Yep.
Always a pleasure.
Well, the safe rooms are progressing, we're starting, we've got all the construction fences up, the building permits are in place, on the five first safe rooms, which are East Moreland, McKinley, Cecil Floyd, Stapleton, and Jung. At Stapleton, we've torn up the front drive, we're trying to get that part completed prior to school starting, we're working internally on all five, on the four schools I mentioned, all of them are getting some sort of work on the inside that's going on, we're installing carpet, redoing offices, and things of that nature. We're relocating utilities and getting ready, clearing the spaces so the bulldozers can run and actually start preparing the pads on all of the sites, we've ordered all of the, we're in the process of going through some metals and shop drawings and approval process for all of the pre-cast concrete, which will be constructed off-site, and we expect the first safe room to be delivered in right about three months now, and then every two weeks, we'll receive another one, so that works ongoing, we're putting the finishing touches on the next batch of four, we hope to have those bid documents on the street in the next two weeks, and that will include Royal Heights, Jefferson, oh, what else am I forgetting, Kelsey Norman, everything but West Central and Columbia, there's one I'm missing there, I said Jefferson, I did, at any rate, we'll have everything but West Central and Columbia on the street hopefully in two weeks. Those are behind the others because of the historical review that took forever, but it had to be done as part of the grant process. So that's basically where we are, you're gonna start seeing a lot more activity on the sites, we'll actually have the construction start in the next few weeks, so we'll have to have the sites ready for the pre-cast when it shows up, and then we'll be off and running, most of the work going on right now is inside the schools.
Once the pre-cast shows up, how long does it take typically to get those in place?
They're scheduling two weeks for erection time on each one of them, that's why they're staggered two weeks, because the crews will just go from one site to the next.
Not finished, just erected.
The same company got all four.
Okay, that makes it easier.
Is the thing, they were a little bit, so that's who we took, and they're very competent.
Any news or anything changing at the Emerson Building?
Yes, I met with the National Guard there for the fifth or sixth time this week, we're working to get that building demolished as a training exercise with the 203rd here out of the Joplin Armory, and they're very interested in it, it's very intensive on the paperwork and the authorizations and everything, they sent a crew down, and they're doing a feasibility study to see if they even think that their equipment can handle the job, and we went through a lot of technical questions, they inspected the building, so we hope to have an answer in a week if the project is feasible, so that's where we are on that, we're, I'm starting to work on the documents to bake the asbestos in the school, it has to be done regardless if the guard demolishes or if we hire a contractor, so I'm beginning that process now, so we'll have that work completed, and the building will be sitting ready for us to either bid it out to a contractor or let the National Guard do it.
I was at a meeting in, I believe, January or February, and ran into General Danner, who was over the Missouri National Guard, and we had a conversation, he asked if there was anything that the Guard could do for Joplin Schools at this point in time, and one thing led to another, and he'd mentioned the possibility of doing some demo work for us if we had any left, and we've kind of been having those conversations ever since, so it's been a, could be a unique partnership to see that come together.
They would do it as what they call AT, or summer training, they're two weeks in the summer, and they're talking about the logistics, they don't think they can do it in two weeks, so they would stagger groups, so they're anticipating five to six weeks possibly, at first glance, and I'm sure that'll be revised as they get more deeply into it, but they're talking about staggering it so that they can complete the project over summer.
That's good to know, I'd like to hear that.
Is there any way we could fence off that playground so that the kids in that neighborhood would have green space, because when I was jogging by there yesterday, if we just put a temporary fence behind the school, there's all sorts, I mean, it's been mowed, it looks really nice, but there's no way to get in.
Sure.
I saw kids trying to go up and over the fence.
Let me talk to Kent about that, and that was another, I had a conversation with Randy the other day, and actually sent an email to Kent this morning about the possibility of, because we've got a couple of different lots that are getting used as playfields by kids anyway, in the neighborhoods, and seeing what we can do for those demoed lots to slick them up a little bit maybe this fall, and if that's even possible, to get it to where kids and families can play on it, because they're using it anyway, and we're mowing them, so we just will make those assets to those parts of the community until we figure out what's next for those pieces of property, so I'll take a look at that in the morning.
Yeah, because there is no way to get into it, I mean, I used to go to West Central when we played football or whatever.
And he still has playground equipment there?
I can see playground, just green space.
Okay, just green space.
So you can play soccer or football.
That's what I was telling CJ, that I went by South one day, and there was a little bunch, the old South property, and there was also a whole bunch of kids up in the neighborhood playing on the property, and neighbors brought their lawn chairs out and mothers and watched their kids play on them, so...
Nice ways.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's all I have for superintendent update.
All right. As far as board report, we have the Missouri School Board Association annual training or meeting is October 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, for any of you that would like to go, and that's always a good training, and a lot of good information, and I believe it's also for the school attorneys, and the board secretaries, and administration, is that correct?
That's correct.
Will we present, will we be presenting?
You know, that's a good question, I know, it seems I get, I don't think we, did we submit any this year?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so we get to enjoy it this year.
All right, sounds like plan. Nobody sure, Angie.
Ms. Walden, any public comments?
No.
No public comments, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We need to pull Kathy Rovers off, or I can step out for that one, for employment?
Can we just deal with abstentions as noted?
For just that?
Just for her.
She should step out, though.
Yeah, I'd step out. Is it in the consent, the whole consent?
Well, we have employments in there, but I don't know what the employments are.
No, it's not, it's here.
It's a closed session.
It's closed session, I...
Very good.
We're fine. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it.
So, once again, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Say it. Ms. Sharp, Mr. Steele, any discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of discussion things, can we kind of talk about the lunch increase price, is that Mr. Bar or Mr. Cravens, or whoever it might be? I was looking for Mr. Kinkle, but I did not see him.
I'm representing him.
Oh.
Good job.
Man. Poor thing.
So, yeah, on the lunch prices, and I'm the first to not like lunch prices, because it hits me four times, but, and we had the same thing last year, this is the third increase in 15 years, so it actually has not increased, it's been stable for a long time, and then there's a federal mandate that says that the paid lunch prices should be coming closer to what USDA reimburses us for free lunches, so that's the reason for the increase, we're trying to show a good faith effort towards meeting that mandate, I did talk to Rick, I'm like, hey, so what do we expect, he's like, well, I'm hoping next year not to be able to, you know, to not increase, so really, we're just trying to do a good faith effort towards the federal mandate that...
So we're being forced to do this?
Yeah, it's the paid lunch equity, and they're just trying to create a more fairness between what we reimburse versus what we charge for a paid.
All right, and then...
Any other questions about the lunch increase? What's it, going to $1.40?
It's going to, it's 10 cents for the elementary, 15 for secondary, so $1.90 at the high school, 1.75 for middle school, and 1.60 for the elementary.
That's still a pretty cheap lunch.
Any other questions about school lunches?
Well, I won't go there, but...
You're gonna ask what's for dinner on the first, is it August 1st?
He wants to know when the noodles, chicken and noodles.
Turkey and noodles.
I used to have him send me an email on that.
Yeah, the school menu. And then on the Stapleton iPad lab and Stapleton laptop lab, is there anything?
She's coming to the table.
She's coming to talk to you.
All right.
Okay, I'm really excited about both of those labs, because they're coming from that school saying that they want more technology, the iPad lab is a request from the principal using Title I funds to purchase the iPads to use with kids, it will help with information literacy, they can use it in addition to any devices that they might already have in existing classrooms, and then they'll... And then the laptop cart is a request from teachers because we have our students going into the library for their, their time that they have with the library media specialist and she has a situation where every kid is on a computer, but she's in there all day tie, and it ties up those computers. So the other classrooms can't have them. So they have asked if there was any way that we could provide more so that way there would be more access. And so it was something that we looked into and we were, we planned for it and were able to provide them for them this year.
Now, the Mac and Mac Air, those don't take the CD drive, right?
They do not.
Okay, so they won't be like the other library carts that we've had in the past, those white thick things?
They, yeah, they will be the same kind of computers that you're using right now, which actually Mac does not make those white ones anymore.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And, but the iPads are for everybody in the, it's not class grade?
It's not for a particular classroom and both are to be shared for the entire building.
Okay. And then the Apple TV purchases, that's probably you?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's that little gadget that sits in front, that's on a television set, right?
Correct. So the Apple TVs are, you're right, it's a very small little gadget, about like this, and it connects to projectors and LCD panels with an HDMI cable. The great thing about them is that it's a new technology that allows us to use iPads or if we're using our very latest operating system on our computers so that we can mirror what is happening on that device. So let's say that I've got a group of 30 students and they all have the iPads out. One student over here does something remarkable on their iPad and I want to display that for everyone. I've got two options. I can have all the kids parade through or we can pass the iPad around or I can mirror it to the Apple TV. Now the kids have an example of, you know, what they need to be working on or if it's a great bit of information that everybody needs, then we've just shared that information with all of the kids. They can do that with the, if they're running the latest operating system on their laptops also. Eventually, if we get to the point where we can have a media server, then we can store videos and we, just, you know, little short instructional video clips and we can use the Apple TVs to stream that down to the students.
And are these going to be district wired or are we just piloting them?
Well, the ones that are going to board tonight are for East Middle School and Soaring Heights and all classrooms, we put, we put that in. And then any place where there is an LCD panel in a learning park, we're putting that in. Something that is not on the board agenda, but another place where we have put, the Apple TVs are in those eighth grade classrooms. Kids are going to have iPads so that way they can do the exact same thing in their classrooms.
And that's this year, right?
Yes.
Every eighth grader will have an iPad this 2014, 15 year.
But is the Apple TV an actual television or is it just a, it's just a little box?
It's just a little device. It's about this big.
Okay. Like a wireless box.
Yeah, I guess you could look at it as a converter. Mm-hmm.
Or through the iPhone too, doesn't it?
An iPod Touch also, yes. And there was a teacher that was using it last year. She had a one-to-one situation with iPod touches and just did a great job of having kids use it, just as I explained, by mirroring it so that way they could share information. It worked great.
Does it also give your TV internet capability?
Well, yes, it does because the Apple TV connects to the internet and so it would be, it's like our projector would have internet capability if it weren't hooked up to the laptop.
So then they could also go on and do further research if they, if that was-
It doesn't have a browser.
Okay.
But, yeah, it does have apps, but it's, they're limited apps.
Okay.
Now, will they have printer accessibility on any of the stuff that they need?
On the laptops at Stapleton, yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes.
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 I failed to mention how riveting Mr. Bar's tax abatement presentation was.
You're probably getting re-herded again.
Oh, good.
Let's do that again. One and done. One and done. So we are on the regular agenda and I believe we are going to Mr. Bar to the accounts payable.
Thank you, President Flowers. The tax bill listed items are for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. The administration recommends the board approve payment of bills, the amount of $10,377,463.15.
So moved.
Second. That's Mr. Landis and Mr. Steele. Any discussion?
Lot of construction monies in there.
Lot of construction monies in there. Anything else? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Discussion items, August board meetings, August 27th. That's all I have.
Open houses and where the kids, I've been asked where, when they get their schedules because on the website it says open house is August 20th, but school starts the 15th. So how do you like middle school, secondary folks get their schedules?
That is the middle school open house day, I believe. But- Elementarys are different.
Right, but it's all, after school starts.
Elementary is the 13th.
And then, and the middle school is after school starts when they'll have their open house?
I've just been asked how they get their schedules. Do they just show up August 15th and?
At high school, they'll send out, I mean, there's, I mean, in the past, they send out information to pick up schedules for freshmen and sophomores. I mean, they'll-
Yeah, our staff returns, when is it? Next, next week. So, you know, that information, we've got a new website too and we're really excited about that and it's going to have better information on it. We just launched it in July, July 1 and that information's going to be forthcoming as the staff that's been trained on that come back on, under contract, start working again and get that, all that information updated. So the websites are great, are going to be a great place to go for information, much improved.
And then we'll let the Joplin Globe know?
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be awesome. Just people, there's free physicals out there if you're planning on DS sport this year. Watch the paper, watch the website, see if you get the physicals for those. And that's all, just, school starts August 15th.
Kids come back in just a few short weeks, I think three weeks from this Thursday, is that right?
It's the most wonderful time. Lovely.
Opening day.
Opening day, August 13th, I believe is the date. We'll have opening day kickoff and looking forward to getting faculty and staff back together and we'll have invitations for that event going out in the very near future.
We've never had media there.
At opening day?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Thought we had.
We always ask the public to be cognizant of the buses rolling again when school opens. So kids will be hopefully adhering to crosswalks, but some of them are, have to kind of relearn from summer on, so.
And speaking of media, they always do a really good job of putting out some PSAs and information about, about, about that and reminding motorists to watch out. Kids are back on the streets again, coming to school, riding bikes and getting on buses and all those things.
And since Kim's not coming up for Bright Futures, I'll remind everyone, there's buses everywhere, to stuff the buses for school supplies.
Great program. We're doing that in cooperation with, which districts is it? Just Carl and Webb?
I think it's in Carl.
Any other discussion items? Anyone?
Make a motion, we go back into closed session?
Take it.
Ms. Sharp, Mr. Landis, any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes.